Adjourn the City Council, let's call it to order. I need an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Cook will say a prayer and Ms. Abair do the American Legion.
All right, dear God, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are of diverse opinion here, yet we wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us to right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, for the invocation and Ms. Abair for the pledge of allegiance. We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council Meeting. As Presiding Officer and Chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the blue forms or call in to 291-8428. 291-8428. To submit your information to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistant is available if needed. Items for submission to the council should be handed to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle. When addressing the council, state your name and the title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not by robust rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commissions. If interested, call 337-291-8800. That's 291-8800. Okay, Chair announcements. Item number 11, J-0, I'm sorry, JO-017-2020, relative to adjudicated properties, the authors have requested an amendment to add new language to Section 72-19D, preference in deposition of property. Item number 12, JO-028-2020, relative to tall grass, the author has requested that the ordinance be deferred indefinitely. Item number 20, JO-040-2020, relative to the Animal Care Center Advisory Board, legal has requested an amendment to clarify board apartments and seats. Item number 23, JO-043-2020, relative to Bowser, legal has proposed an amendment to clarify the duties of the alternate members. For those tuning in from home or other locations, call 291-8428 if you wish to speak. Please keep in mind that there is a delay when viewing on TV and via the internet. Okay, I have an announcement that I would like to make as the Chair. Demolition on University. I'm excited to report that this week, where the permitting, demolition will begin at the Les Paye Motel on University Avenue, better known as Four Corners. This area of the city has been neglected for many years. For a long time, this intersection has been considered one of Lafayette's major entrance ISOs. Thanks to the HRI Properties, this intersection will finally be revitalized. Since the area has been designated as an opportunity zone, revitalizing this property can help attract future investors. The people in this community are very excited about the art loft project. I believe this can be the catalyst needed for future growth. Okay, any council announcements? Okay. Ms. Cook?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just have an announcement about a new COVID-19 testing site that actually opened up today. It is provided by CLI and the Limbs Salvage Club. Dr. David Ali, Chairman of that club. It is going to be every Tuesday and Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00, and Friday's 9:00 to 12:00, and it's at their place, actually, on Wilson Street in the Oriole Center. So it's 901 Wilson Street is the address. And basically, there's no cost. It's a drive-through swab test, no cost to anyone. All citizens wanting a test would be eligible to receive a test at this point. They are looking to open up additional sites with this same club with David Ali. And the sponsors for this particular, along with Dr. David Ali, or LCG is also a sponsor with this testing site. Love Our Community, the National Black Nurses Association, Keith Kishba Construction, and of course, the Louisiana Department of Health, is Public Health, is also sponsoring. So that is Tuesday and Thursday, every Tuesday and Thursday. It started today, was the first day, 1:00 to 4:00, and Friday's 9:00 to 12:00 at 901 Wilson Street. That's all. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Chair Mayor, President Report. Mr. Gilery?
I should have called Director Navo, the back of the chair, Navo, to the front. Hindsight's 2020, but I should have done this at the joint meeting. Instead, I did it twice.
Sure.
Parish and the City Council. So last week was Public Works Week, and we are so appreciative of our Public Works Department. Here's our director. And also, we'll include the Department of Traffic Roads and Bridges and our Drainage Department. They do public works initiatives as well, but Director Navo will be representing all three tonight to hear this proclamation, receive it on behalf of Lafayette Consolidated Government, the administration, and both of our councils. So whereas Public Works, professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities into the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city and parish of Lafayette. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Lafayette to gain knowledge of and to maintain an interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And now therefore, I, Josh Gilery, Mayor President of the Lafayette Consolidated Government, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through May 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the Office of the Mayor President of Lafayette Consolidated Government to be affixed this 19th day of May, 2020. Thank you, Chad, for you, Brian, and Warren, for all you guys do, and your wonderful employees in your respective departments. So thank you. If we could give our wonderful Public Works workers a hand.
May I speak?
Sure.
I want to thank the mayor for recognizing Public Works. Thank the council for all your support. And the dedicated employees of Public Works are certainly deserving of recognition of their activities and doing what they do for public health and just the range of services that we provide even during these hard times, so that we still are able to keep going and do what we can to be helpful and of value to all the people in our community. So thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Socially distant picture up here.
Okay.
We don't have our masks on. There we go.
Good job. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chair, that is all we have to report on the Mayor President Executive Report.
Okay, thank you. Joint Resolution. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets or call-ins are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Chairman, please read item number five.
Joint Resolution 11, 2020. A Joint Resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council Authorizing and Approving and Amended and Restated 457-B Deferred Compensation Plan.
Motion is second. Motion by Ms. Abair, second by Mr. Nakim. Council discussion. Ms. Williams, may I? Oh, there we go, Ms. Abair.
I'm not sure who would be the best person to answer some questions on this. I assume it's the lady in the back. Lori, can you give us some information on exactly what this is and what everybody's voting on?
Yes. We give our employees the opportunity to invest in a deferred retirement savings account. It is similar to what a normal person would see as an IRA or a 401K with a corporation. This is a 457 plan. It is for government entities. It is 100% funded by the employee. No matching funds are deposited into these accounts. Part of what we're doing here is taking care of what the Mayor President ran on is transparency. So the employees, while they won't see any change in the company they do business with, they will see changes on their monthly savings statements or their quarterly savings statements that they get from Nationwide. They'll be able to see the fees that are charged, because right now, the fees are taken out of their interest earnings, and they don't know what they're paying to have these accounts. So part of what we are accomplishing with this is the transparency effect, but it's also updating our plan document. I was surprised to learn that our plan document hadn't been updated since the late '70s, and the IRS recommended that we adopt an updated plan. So that's all it is, just to make sure that we comply with IRS rules and regulations. And we're going to give that opportunity for the employees to see what exactly is being taken out of their earnings and their savings.
Perfect.
And we're going to do an employee education program so that they'll know.
Perfect. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, public comments.
No, sir.
Let's get a vote for the council to adopt this resolution.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Reports and our discussion items. Chairman Reed, item number six.
Update on Police Chief Search.
Ms. Abair?
Thank you, Chairman. Feeling extra chatty tonight, because I've got a couple of things on the agenda, which I didn't on this late meeting, but here we are. This is sort of twofold. I was hoping that the chief could give a very, very brief update on the police chief's search, where we are. I know we've had it on hold because of this pandemic we're going through, so maybe you don't have an update. But the other reason why I put this on the agenda was I've sent an email to you guys right before the pandemic kind of kicked off to express my interest in serving on the panel, which serves to select the next police chief. We've never had a representative on the city parish, or city council serve on that commission before. I had a couple, I had the police union members approach me, as well as some police department members approached me, encouraging me to step up and do so. I'm a big supporter, as we all are, of the police department, but also I've served in my past term, I served as police and fire liaison, so I have that extra knowledge and appreciation for the work that they do. And I'm very passionate that we make sure that we get the right person in here to take us to the next level for our police chief in our community. I spoke to the mayor, I spoke to all of you, no one had an issue with it. I spoke to the mayor about it. He had no issue with it, but in the form of transparency, he wanted me to have a public comment discussion about it with all of you to make sure. So here we are, mayor, does this suffice for you?
More than suffice. So I appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate you bringing this issue into the public, because I think it's important to share with our council's desire to not only be transparent, but to have a collaborative effort here. So we do have a slight update, just so everybody's on the same page. Before COVID-19, we were able to put one advertisement out, and it was online. You know, we were ramped up to do a lot more, but due to COVID-19, we were unable to test, so we just kind of halted that particular search. At this time, I will say, you mentioned chief, we're very blessed to have an interim chief that has stepped up to the plate, and both our chiefs, chiefs of fire, chief of police, chief of parks, who's just done just a phenomenal job. I mean, we talk about the best of the best in our community. Our leadership is wonderful from our patrol officers, corporal senior, corporal sergeant, I can go up through the ranks, just hands down, from firemen to law enforcement. We are so blessed. These are our heroes, I can't say enough. But we have put it on pause purely because of the COVID-19 response, and specifically because we couldn't test. So that's an issue. The search committee, though, will resume very shortly. I do share in Councilwoman Abair's desire to have representation from the city council. You represent the city, this is the city department. I have had some interest from the parish council, too. They didn't put it on discussion, but as we're reminded so many times, and I know you guys are probably tired of hearing me say this, but every inch of the city is in the parish. So if they would want a representative on the committee, I have no objection to that as well. I think y'all have spoken, and Councilwoman Abair would sit on it. I think it's a great selection, and definitely look forward to the future. On this committee so far, we do have representatives from overlapping law enforcement agencies, so it's a good diverse group. Purposefully wanted a civilian to lead the committee, the search committee. I feel like it's important just to kind of have that diversity and make sure that we get the best and the brightest to lead our wonderful police department, because I'll tell you this, we have wonderful officers, and some of them are here with us today. So thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman, thank you to the council, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, and that's all I had, unless anyone had anything else.
Who the current members of the committee are? Do you have that list?
We can provide.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Chairman, item number seven, please. Oh, yes, item number seven, please.
Mr. Chair, we did have the David Stanley, President of the Police Association, who did not wish to speak, but supports Councilmember Abair serving on the committee.
Okay.
And we don't need a vote on that, so we can move right along.
We don't have to vote on that?
Nope.
Okay.
Just a discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman, number seven, item seven, please.
Cajun Dome Update, COVID Protocol Program.
All right, this is another one of mine. I'm going to call up Ms. Pam DeVille. She is the Director of the Cajun Dome and the Cajun Dome Convention Center. She reached out to me, I guess, a few weeks ago to ask me to put her on the agenda. She had some, first, let me thank you, Pam, and I know our mayor's going to want to do the same, I'm not going to steal his thunder, but thank you for allowing the Cajun Dome to step up and be a testing site for Lafayette for COVID. So thank you for that. You guys are always willing to step up, whether it's for Katrina, the BACEs, or whatever it takes, you're always the first in the community to step up and offer to help. With that being said, I'll let you, Pam, take over, and I know you have a couple of people here with you, so we're going to leave both.
Okay, hold on one second, please. Go ahead, Ms. Gilery.
And you're right, I do want to say, just briefly, Pam, wow. Not only did you come to bat for us when this public health emergency happened, and you know, the first thing in any disaster, what structure do we think of? The Cajun Dome. Was it a hurricane or something? It could not have happened without a partnership with the Cajun Dome, and I hope all of our citizens out there are watching or listening in, or watching while we replay it streaming or whatnot, please know how much they stepped up to the plate, and it starts with your leadership, and I appreciate that. And I can't wait till we're at the day where we can watch our raging Cajun basketball and men and women basketball in the Cajun Dome, and see our wonderful concerts that come here, and wonderful, what's just wonderful venue. I mean, it is an asset for our city, asset for our parish and region, and when we get to open it, please, everybody, we're talking about supporting small businesses and employers, let's support the Cajun Dome. So thank you, Pam, for being here, and thank you for bringing this for discussion.
We also have the Chief Financial Officer, Monica Landry, who's here, and I know she's going to be available for questions if you have any. So thank you, Monica.
And if this mic is on, if you could sit and give your presentation.
Awesome. Thank you. Very special. Thank y'all very much. Do I only have five minutes? Okay, good. I just had to be sure. Made a note to myself, Monica made me write this down, I did not come asking for additional operating funds. I would never take money from business, nor the community that needs it, so please, please take that and write it down first. I am the Director of the Cajun Dome. I've been working for the Cajun Dome for 33 years, and I think this is the first time I've ever addressed this body. But this is also the first time we've seen a black swan enter our country, and this black swan has had a devastating effect on a lot. So I want to bring everyone up to speed about this asset called the Cajun Dome, because I feel like some of you have probably never heard the story, and I feel like you don't know where you're going if you don't know where you've been. Please indulge me, I'm going to try and do this. A friend of ours made this for us, and I promised him we would use it. And she's got to figure out how to hit the button. Veronica. Okay, it was a really good video, y'all can tell everybody later, it was cute. The history of the Cajun Dome. In 1979, the city of Lafayette and the university, under the leadership of Kenny Bowen and Dr. Ray Ottomom, decided they wanted to build a facility. They felt like Lafayette deserved a facility like this, and that it was something that could be done. They had strong representatives in Ron Gomez and Edgar Sunny Mouton to assist them in getting the money to do so. The university donated the property, the state paid 75%, or pledged 75% of the construction cost, and the city was putting up the other 25%. At groundbreaking, the bid price for the Cajun Dome was $44 million. When it was completed with all the change orders, they figured they needed bathrooms, they needed concession counters that were a little bit lower than six feet. It came in at $58 million. Opening day for the Cajun Dome was November 10th, 1985. It ran beautifully. It was a great success. In 1987, controversy started about the management of the building, and there was a lot going on. So the commission, in their wisdom, decided to put an RFP out and got several proposals from industry leaders. They spent a year debating this and checking with other communities to find out how they felt about these companies that were managing their facilities. In 1988, they decided to stay in-house, they hired a director, and the current management structure continues on. In the original agreement, the city subsidized the Cajun Dome with $500,000 for operating budget and up to 150 in the capital budget. Whatever remained in the bank at the end of each year on the Cajun ledger sheet, all of it went back to the city with exception of 20%, which was given to the university for helping keep the subsidy low. So therefore, the Cajun Dome has started at zero for many years. Each year, when Joey Darrell was in his final term and the contract came up for renewal, he decided to let us run like a business and no longer required us to return any overage at the end of the year. That way, we could build up some kind of stockpile so that we could continue running in the case of a black swan, but he didn't use that word. Then Joe Robideau became mayor president, and under consolidation, he said that the city only owed $320,000, that the parish should pay the balance. The Bears didn't give us anything. So in 2002, we opened the 72,000-square-foot convention center, and there was no operating subsidy from the city, the state, or the university. Yet the Cajun Dome is responsible for 40% of the hotel motel tax that comes into this community because of events at both facilities. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is our history. And I refer to our, okay, y'all can tell I'm a Mac. There it is, the black swan. So our black swan event is the same event that's affected everyone else, but it really struck us at a bad time. When March came, March 13th, prior to the black swan event, we had only had basketball, Mardi Gras, and one concert. And understand, the previous year, we had done 12 concerts, had numerous family shows, and at the end of the year, we had overcome a previous year's deficit of $250,000, and we had $75,000 in the bank. This year, on March 13th, if we looked forward, we had a million-dollar Cirque show in our midst, Comic-Con was having its best year ever, Monster Jam was coming up quick, and we had eight concerts scheduled to come in. Reba, Luke Bryan, Kane Brown, Lauren Daigle, Kevin Gates, Chris Stapleton, Keith Urban, and Kiss. And in one day, ladies and gentlemen, they were gone. These concerts have all held dates through the remainder of this year and going as far into the third and fourth quarter of 2021. The only way the Cajun Dome makes money is with events. If we have no events, we have no money. The operating budget, well, let me rephrase that, our fixed costs every month are $317,000. So when we get $320,000 from the city, it's sort of like y'all are paying for one month. I'm not being disrespectful, I'm just giving you the facts. So how does the Cajun Dome make money? We do it with concessions, UL Athletic Staffing, the fair, ticket fees, merchant sales, merchandise sales, and catering. That's it. That's the only way for us to make money. So we really do rely on events. Our annual budget before this year would average between $4 and $6 million. So we create our revenue. Veronica's going to have several handouts for you guys to review. Lead has done a great job of doing a report on the building and the impact that we have on the community. You're going to be able to see the events that we have last year compared to this year. I think you'll find a lot of it very interesting. We also have, as an industry, we have a group that has been working on coming out of COVID and how do we reopen our facilities? And they get very good guidelines on what we should all be looking at, and that's part of the reason why we're here. When you look at performers like Garth Brooks that came in in 2017, the impact on the Cajun Dome is really substantial. We had five shows with 61,955 attendees. Those attendees contributed $7.5 million to the economic impact at the Cajun Dome. It was 75 direct jobs, 20 indirect jobs, and produced income for Lafayette residents of 1.7 million. The city and the parish also benefited directly from the Cajun Dome. They received $193,000 in sales tax, that was the city parish, and the state got 152K. The impact on the city itself was phenomenal, and I believe you will see a lot of information in the reports that I'm leaving about that. So on March 13th, we lost the events for March, April, and May, and we've also just recently lost the June event. We had Slimco scheduled, and last week, we brought the employees in, six of them, to work so that we could get together all the things that we'd have to do, so when we brought the rest of the staff in in preparation for the event, it would be seamless. And as we're having a meeting that Tuesday, they'd only been there one day, and we were already working feverishly, we get a call from Slimco, and they said they were canceling their event. Well, that was a huge blow for us. That is a big event. Then yesterday, I got a call from the people with Games of Acadian, and they've canceled, another huge event. So the losses are piling up. The reason is, at the core, the very same. People are very scared. They're very nervous about going anywhere in large groups. The media has really... The media has really created this sense of fear, in my opinion. Because it sells. It gets people's attention. But whether my opinion counts or not, it's translating into major losses. And if we don't do the events that we have on the book, our books, in August, in September, and October, then we're going to be at a $2.2 million loss. And I can assure you, there's going to be no way for us to make that up next year. It'll be impossible. When I took the position in November of 2018, we had 65 employees. Through retirement, attrition, and persuasive conversations, we're now down to 39. I don't know how much longer I can keep 39 with no money coming in. And Monica, who's with us this evening, has already predicted by mid-July, if these losses don't stop, we'll be at zero. And then we will be in trouble. So let me tell you what we've done for outreach. We haven't sat back and waited for people to volunteer to give us money, though I did call several during the segment. Hey, have y'all got any extra money? And I think she had Laurie call me and say, no, we had no extra money, which I totally understand. But we decided we had to go out and start doing a search ourselves. So we checked on all the PPs. We checked on the EIDLs. We didn't qualify. We're not a small business. We talked to Dr. Savoie, who has put us on the university's list for lost revenue. But when we went through this during Katrina, we didn't get our money for two or three years. And that's not going to carry much weight when I tell people, I can't pay you in two or three years. Can you keep working? I don't think they'll hang around. We started working with Paige Cortez back in October on some capital outlay projects. And he's been very generous. Actually, he's been a rock star. And I'm hopeful that'll come through. We've also presented him what we call our pandemic protocol. And it will require money. And he is actively trying to get that for us. But his comment is, Pam, it could be three weeks or it could be six months. And again, I don't have six months. So we are hoping that he pulls off a genuine miracle. We have spoken to the bond commission so that we could get a line of credit for $975,000. We were approved. The bank is going to give us that loan. That was a leap of faith. And that loan is not only to protect the integrity of everything we do at the building, but is also protecting the ticket sales. So some of these shows have rescheduled. Let's hope they happen. But that money has to stay in the bank for the promoter and the artist if the event happens. If it doesn't, it then becomes a property of the person who bought the tickets. And we have to be able to give them their money back. So we can't even use that money. That's all set aside. So I'm not saying we're at a zero balance in the bank right now. But we're rapidly approaching the money that we are owed and we can use. We have to leave this other money alone. It's not ours. So we have worked with Ben Bertha Lot, who was generous in paying us in advance for our incentive dollars for conventions. We've worked with Greg Goutro. He's directed us to many sites and many different people, which have proven beneficial. We've worked with Craig Stansberry and Linda. They had no money and there was no protocol in FEMA per pandemic and the stuff that we were asking for. So they've agreed to write a grant for us, but that'll take a while. We met with Tina S... I knew I was going to do that. Y'all know who I'm talking about. I met with Tina. And we gave her, along with Andy Blaylock, we gave her a protocol for opening up and being safe and letting people know that if they came to the Cajun Dome for an event, they would be safe and the person next to them was healthy. At least to the best of our ability. She was very generous in listening to her. She liked the program and said she could agree with it. And if questioned, she would vote positively for that. Now, that was two weeks ago. A lot of stuff keeps changing with this. So we all hope that we can continue on and that everyone will be satisfied. In your packets, I'm not going to go down the entire list, but I've given you an outline of our plan. How we're going to approach opening our doors, how we're going to not only direct people so that we don't have pilots. We're going to honor the distance rule. But we're going to do something that is now catching on in our industry. We want to put cameras, thermal cameras, at the entrances to take people's temperature as they walk up. I was looking at y'all's operation in the front, and those are really nice. But considering the volume of people coming through, they're very effective. When I've got 10,000 people standing outside ready to come in, I don't think I would get the same speed punching those. So we met with Acadian Ambulance. Well, actually, we met with Acadian and Total Security. Those are the people that are working with us on this program and protocol. They've also helped us write the protocol. They would have EMS people helping us when these are implemented. And we want to make a big deal out of this with the public if we pull this off. Because we believe that that would be one more step towards giving people the confidence to come in our building and feel like we've gone the extra step to keep them safe. We've also met with Consortium Estoration. And we've talked to other companies about the prospects of working a partnership where our people and their people can work together. We have the high school graduations coming up July 9th, 10th, and 11th. The first day, there will be two graduations. The next two days, there will be three. There's approximately two hours between those. With social distancing, we're going to average about 2,000 parents and friends who'll be watching these graduates who'll be on the floor spaced out. When each group leaves, we're going to have to clean those areas before the next group comes in. And even if I had the cameras for that event, I can't turn a student away. They would just have to be put in an isolated area. So there would be a lot of challenges. But the biggest challenge is going to be cleaning the venue, hitting all the touchpoints in the restrooms, around concession stands, entrances, doorknobs, stairs, elevators, and all their seats. So it is going to be a mammoth operation. And that's why we're taking the approach we are. Because when I asked people, other companies for bids or for pricing, it was quite expensive to do what I'm talking about. And no one was interested in putting less than 40 or 50 people in our building to do that. That's pretty expensive. So we're working hard to come up with an approach that will not drive our cost up to the point where promoters say, we can't afford to go to Cajun Dome. And the other thing that we're looking at is we need an HVAC upgrade desperately. We need as much fresh air coming in the building as we can possibly get. And it turns out that with the renovations over the years and things that have happened, we have slowly decreased the amount of fresh air that comes through. Under normal circumstances, that's not a big deal. Obviously, we've been living with it for a while. But under the conditions we are now, and with the future being unknown, we really need to address this. So here is why I'm talking to you guys. We have asked Paige to put the pandemic, our pandemic protocol, in the forefront and go to the state and try to get the money to cover the cost. It's $575,000. Well, we were going to ask the city if there were some emergency capital funds that you guys could basically loan us or give us. The pledge would be that if Paige pulls this off, which I really believe he will, we would pay it back in spades immediately. So I'm not asking for a handout. Right now, I'm asking for a way to keep the building operating, to regain the confidence of the community and understand our ticketed events, 85% of the people that come to our events are from outside of Lafayette Parish. So we really are a driving force in bringing outside dollars into the community. Those people go to restaurants, gas stations, retail. They spend money. And many times, they stay overnight. So what we're trying to do is regain the confidence. Because those people that are in the outlying areas are our bread and butter. And they have to be as confident about our building as our own citizens do. So that's what we're looking for. Obviously, I'm not looking for a decision tonight. I just wanted to throw this idea out so that the powers that be could discuss it. And I'm here to answer any questions anyone might have. I did have one more thing. I'm sorry. I didn't flip my page far enough. If there's no way that capital dollars would be available, it would certainly help us for the next year if we could be given some kind of forgiveness on our utility bills. That's 360,000 a year on average that we spend on utilities. It would be very, very, very helpful. I'm not asking for a forever commitment. It's not a marriage. It's a... We're in deep trouble. And the Cajun Dome is such an icon building. I don't know how to... I'm not crying wolf here. I don't know how to explain it any better than to say, come September, if we don't have something to hang our hat on, we're going to have to hand the keys and the checkbook to the university and say, you have enough money to pay all these events. They're money when they come in. But you don't have enough money to pay anyone that'll work it or any of the expenses. We're done. And I don't like getting that close to zero. But Monica and I have been in this business a long time. I've got 33 years. Monica, how many years do you have? 20. So between us, 53 years of experience, I think we're the only two right now. She's the business brains, and I'm the negotiator. I think we're the only two that have a shot at making this work. But I would gladly hand the reins over to somebody else. Because staying longer than 33 years, I'm not helping my paycheck. So I'm doing this because I love this building. I love this community. I'm from here. I've grown up here. I know Nanette's daddy.
Wow.
I feel like I've raised Liz. This is important to us. And we don't want it to fail. So any consideration that the council can give, we would deeply appreciate.
Ms. Cook?
What was the dollar amount? You said again, 500 what?
575,000.
Okay.
The...
And the utility that you're looking to? Do you know what your utility cost is?
Typically, we average...
You average about 360,000.
360,000 a year. And again, I'm not asking forever. I'm just saying to get to the point where we can be back in business, generating sales tax, generating business. I mean, to have this many concerts stacked up right now, I've got to get to next spring. I've got to be able to do those shows. Because once we do, I'll be paying people money back quickly. I'm saying that if I don't have their confidence, if they're afraid to go in the building because they think the person that sneezes next to them is going to give them COVID, they'll never come back. So we really have put a lot of thought into how to approach this, but we can't do it on our own. We've been trying for two months. We have gone everywhere, asked everyone, and we're just stuck.
Can I ask the mayor? Do you have any thoughts on this? How we can maybe... What we can do with this? I mean, I'm putting you on the spot, I realize.
So thank you, first and foremost, Pam, for the presentation. I think it was very helpful. And just for clarification, the venue or the events that were canceled, were they canceled or postponed? They're on the books still or just delayed, correct?
Some of them have canceled. We had MBA Youngboy. He canceled.
Just a lose my percentage.
Huh?
A lose percentage involved, not a...
I did keep...
Yeah. So my thoughts originally, just so you know, when we talk about utilities, we do have special rules for that. And the Public Service Commissioner is very transparent in his... Or there, should I say, advisor opinions and thoughts. But whether it's, you know, direct payment or whatnot, I know I'm committed to working with the council to look at our funds, to see what we can do. But just understand, I have a lady right behind me.
Oh, I know. I've already talked to her, believe me.
That works very hard.
Yeah.
But...
She was very sweet, but she was very firm.
That's good. That's how I need her to be. Very, very firm. She's the only one that can have the culture of no. Everybody else has to be a culture of yes. But the true, unfortunate facts are our revenue, our tax revenue is extremely down. Now, I believe our council's helped us tonight on a previous vote that should help us with that. Safe Shop Guidelines helped us with that. But as far as commitment to help save the Cajun Dome, I think you have six allies right here that's going to do everything we can to work with you. But we have to be realistic as well.
I understand.
Senator Cortez, I'm very excited to hear that you have the Senate President helping you. It doesn't hurt. And having gotten to know Senator Cortez and our Lafayette delegation, I'm pretty confident that if they say they're going to go fight for you, they're going to fight for you. They're doing that for us here on the LCG side tremendously. So we... I think we're all committed to being extremely proactive, looking at our budget, looking at ways that we can help, but also being completely honest in the fact that...
I understand.
Pam, you don't need me to tell that. It's a dire situation here in our city budget. It was a dire situation before we were sworn in on January 6. But we're going to fix it. We're going to fix it. And let's work hard together to see what we can do.
Well, I really appreciate it. I really do. Because we really felt like we were drowning and that there was no lifeboat anywhere.
And Pam, we may not be the lifeboat.
You know what?
But I'm being honest.
But just the fact that this group is willing to listen and is willing to try and help us, that's huge. That's huge. So thank y'all.
It is comforting. And I think you guys would agree. It is comforting knowing that we didn't just lose those events, that the Cajun Dome staff worked extremely hard to, to the extent you could, to secure those events. That's comforting to me. So thank you for not losing hope and finding...
No, we just have to...
Look, I saw you firsthand out there at the screening site. While we were scrambling doing the COVID situation and you guys were helping, y'all were juggling a lot. And we saw that firsthand, and it did not go unnoticed. So thank you for your service, quite frankly.
Not a problem. You see there?
Pam, I had a question. So what does... I guess, give us an idea, because it sounds like you're month-to-month at this point trying to get through. Is that, give us an understanding of what can, worst-case scenario, or even best-case scenario, happen if you cannot continue to pay the bills? You mentioned that you would have to hand over the keys to the city.
No, to the university.
To the university. Give us some insight what will happen to that structure if that were to happen.
I'm on camera, so I want to be polite. I think what the Cajun Dome has enjoyed and the difference between us and Baton Rouge, and you can go to the River Center and see it, we're about the same in terms of age. But the Cajun Dome has always had a culture of taking care of the facility and reinvesting in it. And Greg Davis was an awesome director. And he always made sure that the cleanliness of the building and the repairs were instant. It was not something that we would put off. So a lot of people walk in our facility and they can't believe how old we are. I think having the impression of a new building, investing in the building, having relationships, 33 years of working in one industry, you make friends. And we've got a lot of friends. There are a lot of people that have come to our building, made a lot of money, and they're going to keep coming back. But they're going to need us to be there. They're going to need people... They're going to need people to, to put it together. I'll give you an example. When all this happened, uh, March twenty-fourth, our floor, our basketball floor was still down. We had had one week of what are we going to do? What are we going to do? And then Monica and I came to the conclusion, we had to furlough everyone. We didn't have a choice. So we furloughed everyone and we walked into the arena and went, oh, shoot, the basketball floor's down. How are we going to get the basketball floor up? So we decided to just leave it there. But it points out that that is a big building and the things that happen there, it's not like you turn on the light and say, okay, just set up a stage and let's have a concert. It's just not that easy. Some buildings, that's exactly what they do and that's why they're in the condition they're in. That's why they don't have events. The Cajun Dome has always prided itself in being a step ahead of everyone else. I have a really good article about River Center. They put a blue ribbon panel together to figure out how to be competitive with the Cajun Dome and get the events that we get. What do we need to do? Y'all just keep doing what you're doing. It's fine with me.
You finished, Ms. Ebert?
That's all I have.
Mr. Lazar.
Spam.
Yes, sir.
Pleasure to see you again.
Thank you.
Just kind of on a lighter note, but have we given any serious consideration to trying to get the top twenty-eight back?
The top twenty-eight as you and I knew it no longer exists.
Yeah.
When they did the split between the public schools and the private schools, we've had coaches approach us about doing regionals. What's the young man saying? Boyd is his last name?
Boyd Southside.
Yeah, but what's his name?
Brad Boyd.
Brad, yeah. Brad has done a couple of events last year with some girls' teams during, um, at the end of men's basketball games, very successful. And I think it's going to have to be a very organic deal. I think we're going to have to get more high school teams to come in after some of the girls' games. And once those high school teams make money that they've never made before in their gyms, I think that it will evolve into something. I really believe it will. I don't think it's anything we can force because when it did go down and we tried two years in a row to get it back and each time we, we were, um, not treat it fairly, I'm being very nice. On the third go around when they called us to come back, we said, forget it. We're not sending you a proposal that you send to another city to negotiate with. We're done. And that was it. It was never the same. And you know the ten year, no, twelve years that we had it? We set records attendance for ten of those years. They made more money at the Cajun Dome than they did at any other venue, but who knew?
Okay. Um, is there any more discussion? Okay. Everybody good?
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate you.
Ms...
Thank you, Pam.
Ms. Williams, any public comments? Okay.
Yes.
Ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing and blue sheets or call-ins are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Chairman, please read item number eight.
City Ordinance Thirty-Six, Two Thousand and Twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty operating budget of the Lafayette Parish Consolidated Government by transferring home investment partnerships funds totaling sixty-five thousand dollars received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to Lafayette Habitat for Humanity Incorporated, as well as authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a grant agreement concerning such funds and an act of conveyance conveying ownership in and to the property-bearing municipal address one-one-one Town Homes Drive, Lafayette, Louisiana, seven-zero-five-zero-one.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Counsel discussion. Ms. Williams, any public comments? Okay, I'll need a vote.
Lee Rochelle? She passes.
She passed. That's it?
No, no other speakers.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I need a call for the vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance Thirty-Seven, Two Thousand and Twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to accept a donation of certain improvements hereinafter described for the purpose of operating and maintaining a sewer line.
Motion and second. Motion by Mr. Lazar, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Counsel discussion. I see none. Ms. Williams, public comments?
No, sir.
Vote for a council to adopt the ordinance.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance Thirty-Eight, Two Thousand and Twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year nineteen twenty operations and maintenance budget and capital improvements budget of the Lafayette Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the utilities department.
Motion and second.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Ebert, second by Ms. Cook. Counsel discussion. See none? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote for a council to adopt ordinance.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint Ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing and blue sheets or call-ins are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Item number eleven?
Joint Ordinance Seventeen, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the Lafayette Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances, Chapter Seventy-Two, Property Management, specifically Article Two, Management and Disposition of Adjudicated Properties, particularly Section Seventy-Two dash nineteen D, Preferences in Disposition of Property, and Section Seventy-Two dash forty F, Initiation of Donation of Adjudicated Property.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Ebert, second by Mr. Nakain. The office has proposed an amendment to add language to Section Seven-Nine dash nineteen D, Preference in Disposition of Property. That's specific. I need a motion and second on the proposed amendment. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Counsel discussion on amendment? I see none. Any public comments on amendment?
No, sir.
Vote on the amendment.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Counsel discussion on ordinance as amended? Uh, Ms. Williams, any public comment on ordinance as amended?
No, sir.
Okay. Vote for a council to adopt ordinance as amended.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
Item number twelve, J O dash zero-two-eight dash two thousand and twenty has been deferred indefinitely. Chairman, please read item number thirteen.
Joint Ordinance Thirty-Three, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement as amended with the Lafayette Parish School Board to receive funds directed for use in construction of Lafayette Transit System bus stop shelters and to amend the then-current operative budget of the Lafayette Parish Consolidated Government to account for receipt and expenditure of said funds.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Counsel discussion. See none? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote for a council to adopt ordinance.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance Thirty-Four, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Parish Water Works District North.
Motion and second. Motion by Mr. Glenn Lazar, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Counsel discussion. None? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote for a council to adopt ordinance.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance Thirty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing and reaffirming the Transportation Policy Committee of the Acadian Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Liz Ebert. Counsel discussion. Uh, I see none? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote for a council to adopt the ordinance.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance Thirty-Six, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Parish Water Works District South.
Motion and second.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Ebert, second by Mr. Andy. Counsel discussion. See none? Public comments?
No, sir.
Council to adopt the ordinance.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance Thirty-Seven, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reaffirming the Parish of Lafayette's appointment to the Board of Commissioners of the Teche Vermillion Freshwater District.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Counsel discussion? None? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote for a council to adopt the ordinance.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yeah.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance Thirty-Eight, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council affirming the Cajun Dome Commission.
Motion and second. Motion by Mr. Andy Nakain, second by Ms. Liz Ebert. Counsel discussion? See none? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote for, from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance Thirty-Nine, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reaffirming the Industrial Development Board of the Parish of Lafayette, Louisiana Incorporated.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Ebert. Counsel discussion? See none? Public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance Forty, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reorganizing the Lafayette Animal Care Center Advisory Board.
Motion and second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Legal has proposed an amendment to clarify board appointments and seats. I need a motion and a second on the proposed amendment. Motion by Ms. Ebert, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Counsel discussion on amendment? No discussion? Ms. Williams, any public comments on amendment?
No, sir.
Vote on the amendment.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to amend is approved.
Counsel discussion on ordinance as amended? I see none? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Let's vote to adopt the ordinance as amended.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved. Joint Ordinance Forty-One, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reaffirming the Municipal Civil Service Board in accordance with Section Four dash fifteen of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Home Rule Charter.
Motion by Mr. Lazar, second by Mr. Andy Nakain. Counsel discussion? I see none? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Let's vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance Forty-Two, Two Thousand and Twenty. A joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council reaffirming the Downtown Development Authority.
Motion and second.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Ebert, second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Any council discussion? I see none, public comments?
No, sir.
Let's vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance forty-three, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reorganizing the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Second, motion in second? Motion by Mr. Lazar?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lizzy Bear. Legal has proposed an amendment to clarify the duties of the alternate members. I need a motion in second on the proposed amendment. Motion by Mr. Andy Nakane, second by Ms. Lizzy Bear. Council discussion on amendment? I see none, any public comments on amendment? Vote on the amendment.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Council discussion on ordinance as amended? I see none, public comment on ordinance as amended?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance as amended.
District one?
Yes.
District two? District two?
Hello?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved. Joint Ordinance forty-four, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reorganizing the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board.
Motion in second?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Bear, second by Ms. Cook. Council discussion? See none, public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance forty-five, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reorganizing the North Lafayette Redevelopment Authority.
Motion in second? Motion in second?
Second.
Motion from Ms. Danny Nakane? Second by Ms. Lizzy Bear. Council discussion? And if, no, I see none, any public comments?
No, sir.
Let's vote for the council to adopt the ordinance.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance forty-six, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reorganizing the Keep Lafayette Beautiful Board.
I need a motion. Motion by Mr. Glenn Lazar, I need a second? By Ms. Andy Nakane. Council discussion? I see none, any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, let's vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance forty-seven, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reaffirming the Members of the Board of Trustees of the Lafayette Public Trust Financing Authority.
I need a motion. Motion by Ms. Cook?
Second.
I need a second? Second by Ms. Bear. Council discussion? I see none, any public comments?
No, sir.
None? Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance forty-eight, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reaffirming the Members of the Board of Trustees of the Lafayette Public Innovation Alliance.
I need a motion in a second? Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Bear. Council discussion? See none, any public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance forty-nine, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reorganizing the Lafayette Airport Commission.
Motion in second, motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Council discussion? None, Ms. Williams, public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance fifty, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reaffirming the City Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with section four ten A of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Home Rule Charter.
Motion in second? Motion by Mr. Lazar, second by Mr. Andy Nakane. Council discussion? There's none, public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Hello?
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance fifty-one, twenty twenty, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council, reaffirming the Parish Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with section four ten B of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Home Rule Charter.
Motion in second? Motion by Mr. Nakane, second by Ms. Lynette Cook. Council discussion? See none? Ms. Williams, public comments?
No, sir.
Vote for the council to adopt the ordinance.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Hold one second, please.
Sorry to interrupt, but while we have both our interim director, I also wanted to introduce to the council Ms. Mary Slimon, who will start as our newly elected director Wednesday, a week from tomorrow. So, very excited about this. Thank you to our planning commission, yeah, please.
I can't, I can't see her, can she come right now?
Yeah, come on.
Yeah, I can't, I can't see her.
The chair would like to see. But, look, thank you to all our members out there watching. Thank you to our two parish, parish and city planning commission members. Look, I know they work very hard, called a good special meeting. Thank you to Ann. Ann has done just a tremendous job, and we're so excited to have Mary with her background. But if you, if you have anything for the council, not to put you on the spot.
Welcome aboard. And, and, and thank, yeah, and thank you, Ann, for replacing, did a fantastic job.
Yep. Thank you.
Oh, she's shy.
That's it. We didn't scare her off with this long meeting.
No. Ann, yes, please, Ann.
I think we need to read item number thirty-two first.
About the appeal?
The appeal.
Okay. Jeremy, please read item number thirty-two, the appeal.
Appeal of City Planning Commission Action by Developer, Raul Arnold Property Lots One A, One B, and the Extension of Current Lane, PC twenty twenty-four.
Okay, development and planning, please, Ann, introduce yourself. Hold on one second, please.
All right, Ann Famoso, Development and Planning. Do we have a few slides for this, or do I, do I do it? Okay, I do that, okay. There we go. All right, this was an appeal of the City Planning Commission action. This actually went to the February seventeenth meeting of the City Planning Commission. It's a development located on Ambassador Caffrey Parkway, across from Walmart, on the east side of Ambassador Caffrey. The proposed project, there's, there's two lots proposed here, lot one A on the front that fronts Ambassador Caffrey, and lot one B in the back. The front lot is proposed to be an Aldi grocery store. This went to the City Planning, or City Planning Commission, and we required, we staff required a, that the developer dedicated and construct an extension of Current Lane, so Current Lane, as you see right now, is on the west side of Ambassador Caffrey, an extension of Current Lane across Ambassador Caffrey, to tie into Ogeron Drive and Bell Dom Drive, so to improve connectivity. There was a lot of public feedback at the meeting, and a lot of residents from Ogeron Heights especially were not in favor of connecting, so the planning commission actually waived the requirement to connect to Ogeron Drive, but they did not waive the requirement to connect to Bell Dom Drive. So, as it stood with the planning commission action, the planning commission required that the developer dedicate and construct an extension of Current Lane from Ambassador Caffrey Parkway to Bell Dom Drive. The developer appealed that action, and so they're willing to dedicate and construct an extension of Current Lane to the end of Lot One A, which is the, the end of the Aldi development. We've since been in contact with the developer and their representatives, and we've come to an agreement where we, we're in agreement to have the, the, dedicate and construct to the end of the Aldi development as they wish, and then just dedicate right-of-way only to Bell Dom Drive, so not construct at that point. So, any questions for me?
Any, any question from the council? Okay. Hold on one second, Ann.
Ann, you gave me this motion, but I'm not sure if I need to read this. You sort of just explained it, but I don't know, you think I need to read it out loud, or we need to?
What do you think, Paul?
Yes, you do need to read it out loud.
Read it out loud?
Yeah.
All right. Keep this meeting going, huh? So, a motion to approve the action of the City Planning Commission with the modification for condition number twenty on the action letter to read as followed. Twenty. Current Lane shall be dedicated and constructed as public street from Ambassador Caffrey Parkway to the northeastern most part of Lot One A. From that point, head easternly to the existing right-of-way to Bell Dom Drive. To accommodate a public street, owner and developer shall dedicate all necessary right-of-way and servitudes, traversing just north of and or through Lot One B, in a configuration acceptable to LUS, Department of Public Works, Department of Traffic, Roads and Bridges, and Department of Development and Planning. To the existing right-of-way of Bell Dom, there shall be no tie-in to the connection of Oregon Drive. That's basically what she said. Y'all just wanted to hear my voice.
Okay, do we have any comments from the appellate?
We do have a speaker, and I don't know if he's the appellate or a citizen, a neighborhood, a subdivision citizen, Lee Clark.
Mr. Mayor President, Council, allow me to speak. Terre Haute subdivision. Behind Doug Ashy, Dwight's. Bell Dom comes from Current Lane, all the way up to Johnson Street. I've lived in that subdivision for forty years. My daughter, my grandkids, walked the neighborhood. It's a dead end. We had no traffic, none whatsoever. It was a nice neighborhood, a safe neighborhood, without traffic. We could walk, talk to our neighbors, and nice afternoons. And the problem we had was the only access out of the subdivision was Johnson Street, in between Doug Ashy and Dwight's. That is total chaos, trying to get left or right onto Johnson Street. The whole neighborhood was concerned about only one access out of that subdivision. And six weeks ago, four weeks ago, there was a fire, a house fire. And exactly what we thought happened, happened. There were fire trucks, just lined up, one behind each other. And the reason why? The, the streets are not wide. It's a narrow street, it's made for one car. You back out of your driveway, you go down the street, well, there's a trailer with the, the grass cutters. There's no room. We gotta go around, close to the ditch, that we have ditches. We do not have sidewalks. We could walk on the road without having any problems. Safety. Now we have a safety problem in walking our neighborhood. We won't be able to do that anymore. That is, will cease if all that traffic is gonna be diverted to Bell Dom, to Johnson Street. Several mornings, I've leave, I've left work, and I can't get through, because there's an eighteen-wheeler, unloading, and I have to back up, turn around, hit Bell Dom Drive, and then come on out. And then sometimes, there's a Cisco truck, unloading for Dwight's, or the crawfish guys that's selling the crawfish. Somebody's gonna definitely get hurt whenever you're driving on to Cloto, into that Terre Haute subdivision, because people, with their barbecue, their crawfish, they walk out between cars, and all of a sudden, the car that's coming, they stop. Somebody's definitely gonna get hit. They park on the boulevard, there's no room, barely enough room, without hitting mirrors on each car, to get into the subdivision. I love that subdivision. And to direct traffic through a subdivision that was developed in the fifties, has no roads, that the city kind of left that part alone, to where we don't have sidewalks, we have ditches that flood every time it rains. And it won't be the same anymore. And I just can't see safety. There will be no more safety, and I can't see the city allowing that to happen. It, it's very disappointing, because we won't be able to, to have a neighborhood like we really want a good neighborhood, neighborly neighborhood. So, thanks for your consideration.
Mr. List, they have a floor.
I was gonna call Warren up with traffic.
And just to conclude, the public comment, we did have some citizens who did not wish to speak, who signed in, in opposition to the appeal. There were four citizens. And also, to the motion that Liz made, there was no second, if we can get a second to her motion.
Andy? Second by Ms. Danny Nakane.
Thank you.
So, if you don't mind, this, it's been a few months. We, I, just so y'all recall, I deferred this a few times, because of, we, well, we had a meeting we didn't, that didn't take place, and then I wanted, before we didn't allow any public to attend, I wanted to make sure the public had the ability to attend. So, Warren, if you don't mind refreshing everybody's memory about why you felt this was so important, specifically the turning lane on Johnson Street, et cetera.
Yeah, so, currently, the latest question, there are only exits on Johnson Street, and there is a significant number of crashes that are going on. Ocurring all the time, yearly, and the real reason for that is that there is no other way out, it's just Johnson Street. So, to take a left there is a mess. I mean, taking a right is bad enough, but taking a left is not something I would recommend at any peak time anywhere. And so, this right-of-way that we're requesting would provide this neighborhood with an additional out, and an out that would be signalized, which would be a much safer left-turn movement to get out of the neighborhood than an unsignalized left on Johnson Street. And so, for me, it's about providing options. If, if I lived in there, or if I had a young driver in that neighborhood, I'd much rather them go out to a signal to, to accommodate their movement than I would ever allow them to turn left on Johnson Street, which is the way it exists today.
Why not put a light on Johnston?
So, that's been studied, it currently did not meet the warrants. Johnson Street is a DOTD road, they're stringent, they have very stringent requirements when it comes to the installation of a new signal. We did look at that, we looked at it multiple times, and it did not currently meet the warrants. And the reason why the warrants exist is because we know that if we install a signal, the total number of crashes that are gonna happen is gonna go up, because when you install a signal, a lot of rear ends happen. And so, those thresholds exist to balance those two things.
Okay. And talking to the constituents, the big concern is, and he mentioned it, is the roads, because it's an older neighborhood, the roads are so narrow, there's no sidewalks. So, would LCG have plans, or could we discuss plans, if this does pass, to widen the roads, to give them, because there is gonna be additional traffic, we know that.
Yeah, there, there's no doubt.
Whether it's them going, someone from the front of the neighborhood going there, or someone not in the living neighborhood going there, someone, there's gonna be more traffic in that direction, is, is there room for discussion if this does pass to widen the road?
Yeah, so there's no, there's no doubt the roads are narrow, there is no sidewalks, there's open ditch, there's no denying that. We could definitely provide a price to, to widen out the road to some reasonable width, if the council wished to fund that, and we could proceed with that project. But you know, there's, there's many competing priorities, and when it comes to overlays and widening, but we could definitely provide that info.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Lazar?
Ann, could you come back up, please? Can you, what was the nature of the agreement again?
Put your mic up to you.
I'm sorry.
Ann?
Yes.
Do you need the pointer to show them?
I think I'm good.
You okay?
Yeah.
What's the nature of the agreement?
Yeah.
Basically, I think we felt that it would be a compromise where, right now, there's no plans for that back lot, that Lot One B, and now I kind of feel like I need the pointer.
Oh, I, I can see it.
So, there's no development plans for that at this point, and there's only one planned development on the front, so to, to require the new street requirement for the entire thing would be definitely a bit of a burden, and so I think we felt that this was a compromise to just get the right-of-way dedication right now, because it would be, it's an important right-of-way for, as Warren talked about, this, this kind of serious safety issues with only one way out of the neighborhood currently.
So, where, where is the road gonna connect now? Well, would there be a? Yeah.
Where will it connect?
Where's the proposed road gonna connect to? Are we talking?
It looks a little bit like this, without the little piece of red to the north on Ogeron. That's, that would not be that. So basically, it's Current Lane connects to, would connect to Bell Dom. But as, as we talked about, it wouldn't be constructed at this point, it would just be a right-of-way dedication.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it, okay, thank you.
Show her the Walmart is on Ambassador, to maybe give a landmark?
Well, yeah, I, I know, I know, I know what's that, I know what's that, next to VA Clinic. Well, yeah, I know, I know, I know what's that, I know what's that, next to VA Clinic. A big vacant lot next to VA Clinic, yeah.
And, and Ann, if the amendment passes, if you could send Jeremy and I the word version, so we could send it to press early in the morning?
Absolutely, sounds good. And if I could call up, unless there's more discussion, I'd like to call up Legal to.
See if Mr. Lazar finished?
No, I'm finished.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Ebert?
I was gonna call up Legal to.
Yeah, we're gonna get to it, for clarification, yeah.
No, it's not necessary.
Legal to clear, I'm sorry, to clarify.
Good evening again.
Good night.
I was just gonna, since this is an appeal, I wanted to bring you up like we always do for you to, eventually when we vote, explain, a vote yes means there's, and a vote no means there's.
Right, okay. So with the current motion that's been seconded, you motioned to approve the action of the commission with the modification that, all that long verbiage about it being constructed to Lot One A B, One A, and then right-of-way from there to right-of-way of Belldom. A yes vote to that motion would essentially do exactly that, approve the development with the condition as related to the, what's in front of you, the appeal, the specificity that the road would only be constructed by Aldi up to the corner of their lot, and then they have to dedicate the rest of the right-of-way to Belldom. That would be the result of a yes vote.
So, yes is to, to approve?
A yes is to, basically, in layman's terms, the yes is to approve the agreement that they've already worked out.
Okay. That's it.
Okay?
Sum it up, yeah.
In a short answer.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote on the appeal.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
No.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to approve City Planning Commission action with condition is approved.
introductory ordinance. Motion and second for the council to introduce ordinance, item thirty-three through thirty-four in Globo. Motion and a second to introduce, motion, I need a motion first, motion by Ms. Cook, and second by Mr. Andy Nakken. Jeremy, please read.
City Ordinance thirty-nine, twenty twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor-President to sell certain surplus property consisting of a vacant lot located at four zero nine South Washington Street, Lafayette, Louisiana, seven zero five zero one, that is no longer needed for public purposes, and to amend the fiscal year nineteen twenty operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by budgeting the sale proceeds of fourteen thousand and one dollar in the City Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund, and reducing the use of prior year fund balance. City Ordinance forty, twenty twenty. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the contribution of one retired line truck to South Louisiana Community College pursuant to intergovernmental agreement.
Comments from the public concerned above introductory I ordinance?
No, sir.
Council discussion? Call for a vote introducing Globo items thirty-three to thirty-four.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?